Kau bayan na mayong adlaw oga. Welcome sa tuang inyong konsihokaron. Inili is George Abakos, gikan sa City Information Office in Dakbayan sa Kagayan di Oro. Ubo sa administrasyon ni Mayor Rolando Clarix. Oi, guman sa papangulusab sa atong City Information Officer, Ms. IBS Guantero. Karoon sa atong inyong konsihok, ni atong edisyon, karoon si Manaha. Tong makauban no ang usano usap ka miyembro sa 20th City Council, alang sa pagpabot sa haham mga pagpaningkamot programa, nagigingosgan alang sa kayuhan sa atong mga katauhan dinhe sa Dakbayan sa Kagayan di Oro. Tong makauban karoon ang chairman sa Committee on Energy sa 20th City Council, si City Councilor Agapito Agasuan. Kagawad, mayong adlaw, welcome sa inyong konsihokaron.
Good morning, George. Gwapo munde kayo ni atong office no, it's very professional. But oh, thank you for having me. I hope we will have a great time aning interview.
Yes, and of course, sa amandang baguhol salamat. Of course, kanin mo, Kagawad, simui kayo no, ngayat hagyan, miyegi kayo, alang sa pagpadangat sa katauhan no, sa imuhang mga paningkatan, guman mga programa. But unang-una, Kagawad, siguro mong kumusta? Kumusta si Kagawad Agasuan karoon?
Magi, it has been ano na, one year since nakalinggo ni sa office. But truth be told, at first no, we feel anxious kay magpamanta, first time pamanta nakalinggo't first term. But over the course of the year, I have really come to enjoy and I have come to love my job. Ganahan kayo ko, as evidenced by permityo ko nadari, takong committee meeting, sapilan yun ako, even if member ko or not. So overall, ganahan kayo ko. I feel really comfortable, I feel good. I like the debates, the discussion, the arguments. Ganahan kayo ko sa kong trabaho dali. And if na amaganik ko'y permiti buhaton, I would love to be here always.
Yeah, yeah. Niya makita wagi na sa mga trabahong no, ang resulta niya na when you love your job. And of course, it's the fulfillment nga tumabati at the end of the day to our constituents. And of course, siguro Kagawad, sa pilanapod ka mga bulan, inyong ehtan ang imuhang komitibang karoon. Sa mga kasinatiyal guman na mga maybe challenges sa paghawid o sa banining ato ang komitibang, naghihawiran karoon Kagawad?
Ang original aning committee, kedy man gudakoy chairman. I think this is part of a larger committee. But since ilan ang gi-breakdown to give way to the councilors para maging chairman sila, sa karoon, wala pa tay pressing issues with regards to energy. This is national laws. So most likely, we are just waiting for the initiative of the Energy Department of Metro Manila. Ats'now, wala pa kayo tay pressing issues to discuss. And that is why most of my time, I spend joining committee meetings. In fact, before kunian hidani, tay committee meeting on public utilities with regards to again, the bao-bao. So muna mong gindiskasan dito. But overall, until nate pressing issues, ginaassure na ako, ang public na, for sure, trabaho na to. If ever na ay mga concerns with regards to energy issues in Kagayan di Oro.
Yeah, of course. And with that, Kagawad, sa kuwaning ikaingon, pilanakamang bulan, howira, adunay komitibang hihatag sa atong minority block? Siguro, gikan sa imuhang Kagawad, kumusta karoon ang minority block dera sa 20th City Council?
Actually, I don't consider, pagabot diya sa City Council, do pinood lang. I never consider factions in the City Council, like the majority, the minority. I never put it in that perspective. I put it as a, an overall one council. We have colleagues, we have disagreements, et cetera. But I don't really label it the majority and minority. Although it may be clear to the public, but I do not consider it as a divisive, divisive connotation of the minority majority. Overall, we are just one council. But we have different ideas, different approaches in solving problems. But at the end of the day, we are one council. I don't consider minority majority block.
Yeah, and ang kanilut manggutpo niya na Kagawad, no, when comes to daghang mga ideas nga mo, ang sanin mo, surveys, kung malaglahi inyong hampang landta?
Yes, exactly. With regards to that, George, I want to add, it is actually very beneficial for the city to have debates. Because when you have ideas, you have to put it to the test. Now, if you do not put it to the test, then that idea would become weak. And if you have weak ideas, then you cannot solve the day-to-day problems of the city. So I would rather, I would rather we have different, I always preach that difference in ideas doesn't mean that one is wrong. It just means that we have different approaches to solving and to finding solutions to everyday problems in the city. So with regards to the majority minority, even my colleagues, what we consider the minority, they always argue. Always argue, and that is a good thing. That is a good sign that the council is healthy and the council is intelligent. So I would rather, I would rather that we argue, we discuss, because at the end of the day, you always find the best possible solution.
Yes, so ang makabinipisun niya na ato ang mga katauhan no. And of course, kumasa ang harmony rin yon?
Yes, that is the most important thing in the council or in any endeavor, in any establishment or corporation. The number one, the number one thing that we have to consider is the synergy. Not just the harmony, but the synergy that each member will work towards that same goal. So with regards to the synergy of the council, although there are differing ideas, I would, I would say that the council is actually very healthy, at least now. Disregarding, ah, sorry, Sir George, disregarding the personal issues, because it would always come up, personal issue would always be there. But with regards to work, I would say that the council is very intelligent and very competent in addressing the issues in Kagayan di Oro City.
Yes, and ato na siya makita with the projects or the legislations that yon napasala. Very kwanget siya. Synergistic, yeah. And of course, makita na to ang ilahang pagtinabangay alang sa kayuhan. For sure, basta gani kanang kayuhan na sa mga katauhan, maghiusa man gud, Kagawad?
At the end of the day, George, the welfare of the people is the utmost important. So we set aside, yeah, we set aside our personal differences, our like ulterior motives. We set it aside when it comes to the people's welfare. So prior again, even if I light out the approach, the priority will always be the people. Although it's cliche, but it is the reality.
Yeah, and with that, Kagawad, no, imuhang mga programa, usap guman, imuhang mga ginhosgan dera sa 20th City Council, alang sa kayuhan sa atong mga katauhan. One of this, ah, among na balidad Kagawad, ang imuhang baga support no, kining sa pagacredit sa mga retail services dinhe sa tuang Dakbayan, ah, as a measure usab no, sa pag-support sa DTI. Can you tell us more about this?
What do you mean retail services? Can you expound?
Yes, retail services, yes, retail services though sa mga gagmay mga negusso Kagawad, when it comes to mga...
With regards to small business, kanan-kanan, eh, let's transform it into MSMEs. Originally, I came from the private sector, George. My profession was really a small-time businessman. With the grace of God, we, yes, in sugamay. And that is why I want to share those knowledge with regards to business. So with regards to the MSME in Kagayan di Oro, mostly the small and micro businessmen comprises the majority of our economy. So that is why I always support, and as much as possible, these small businesses are the driving force in the economy of Kagayan. Mostly, our businesses are comprised with small businesses. So that's why I always give my support and as much as possible craft legislation that is advantageous to small business.
Yes, and of course, kining ginhosgan nga accreditation with the Department of Trade and Industry, that would really help them and sab, no, when daghang mga programa sa DTI nga, pwitin lang maavail with the accreditation no?
Yeah, with regards to DTI, I think last week, we had a meeting. The, I think the DTI discussed about the Bagwis Award, something that awards exemplary businessmen. And I actually pointed it out that they were giving awards to large corporations. And I would push them for all about the awards of the smaller businesses like us and the most of Kagayan di Oro businessmen. So yeah, at the end of the day, we support what is beneficial to the weakest members of the society.
Yes, because daku po kay di sila ikatabang Kagawad, when it comes to sa pagilabinang karoon no, padayon atong babarog gikan sa effecto sa pandemya in atong...
I would argue, George, that it's not just during the pandemic, but even pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic, pandemic, businesses really like the lifeblood. With regards to whatever conditions we are facing, we have to really promote, promote the businesses. And again, it is a cascade effect. If we have good businesses, it means more taxes, more taxes, more jobs, more jobs to be accommodated, more money to be given as social welfare for people, to promote peace and order, infrastructures. Mogina siya, agin na magsugod, it's one of the basic foundations of the city, ang atwang small businesses, ang enterprises. It's very crucial to support.
Yeah, and siguro mong panglantaw, kumusta sab, isay pa, coming from the business sector before, kumusta sab ang atong mga businesses dera sa Kagayan, Kagawad?
Ang lakanag yong business is very, that is a very slippery slope. Sometimes, in businesses, we earn, sometimes we fail. I, I think siguro for our new businessmen or even our old, kailangan na nagitay, dili man lugar ni si, kanamurig tubluan yun ang ita pili mga kabataan, ato kilang i-tublu. You have to teach business to how to make money, entrepreneurship, yeah, exactly the word I was looking for. Yeah, we have to teach entrepreneurship to people. Ako, I always promote business, okay? Not just for the ones who are capable, even for the youth. I want the youth to really engage in business, kedy magin na magstart na nan go. And whether you belong to middle class, lower class, or even the upper class enterprise, is one of the basic foundations of the community. So yeah, I always support the business sector.
As, as a supporter and of course, a kanabang ginhosgan yun, ang pagtabang sa mga business community dinhe sa Kagayan di Oro City. And of course, panglantawin mo sa ekonomiya sa atong Dakbayan, Kagawad?
Yeah, although reports were saying that we were, we are actually recovering economically. But I would say that in the ground, there are still a lot of poor people. So even if gasakang economy, the question would be, nano dagan pa mangyudgyha kong kayo popri? And I think it will always be that, naagyudgyha ko na siya. That's why, as much as we are recovering, we have to also, again, we have to also protect and address the weakest members of our society. So we have to give them more opportunities, social protection, atag-taw mga pensions, et cetera, et cetera. Ayuda in the form of siguro money or what pa. But I think we really have to address, even if magsaka atong economy, and the more economic stability we have, we also have to really support those, the poorest of the poor. So our obligations would be, those who are successful in our city, we have to have that social responsibility also, to support and protect the poorest of the poorest.
Yeah, and of course, sa hinay-hinay, we're doing it to help no. Gradually, our, the grassroots and of course, mga basic services that they really deserve. I don't usab nga, mas ma-elevate ang ilahang panginabuhian and of course, matabangan sila alang sa kalambuan, usap sa ilahang mga tagsa-tagsa kong mga pamilya, in a long term no. Like we have our scholarship program for the youth, no, mga deserving mga kabatanunan. And of course, mga dugang panginabuhian, livelihood projects, and we're partnering usab with the national agencies.
Dugang kwanget yong panginabuhian. Usan nga, I am one of those councilors who are really trying to push ibalik na tutung atong night market deta. Ganuman, because my idea is, if nate night market, we engage people entrepreneurship, we engage them in enterprise. So during that week lugar, for example, if we have a place na mga tao like ng Kogan, Kogan namon siguro taga night market. So supportive kayo kuwan na, kay parang mga tao, magsiki sila ang negusyo. So there will be like a circulation of money. So once there are circulation, naaginay maka benefit. If there are circulations of money in the city, there would be profit. So mogina siya ganahan kay kuwan. And also with these night markets, apil nagyapo na ang tourism in as far as na... The night market is not just a place for enterprise. It is also a place of attraction. So when other cities are now involved, kung naiban mga syudad, like let's say Bukidnun, Iigan, El Salvador municipalities. Yes, because dili man gud siya po idi, ato na i-explain nga, even if we have these economic enterprise in areas, if the money circulating is only the money in Kagayan di Oro, then we will just be exchanging money with different Kagayan no. But just imagine if we have opportunities and not really investors, let's skip the investor part. Let's just say that we have customers from other cities. So in return, they would give the, they would give us their money. Now, there are new circulations of money in the city. So it comes hand in hand, the tourism and our business enterprise practices in Kagayan di Oro City. So gwapo kayo na siyang program na gusto na ko na siya palapdan poon. But again, it is up to our local government unity, that is the direction that we are trying to make. But at the end of the day, if we are really want to improve our economic enterprise, it has to go hand in hand with two reasons. If we attract those people inside Kagayan di Oro City to put their money in our city, so that we can circulate and generate those money, for even more money in the process.
And, and right now, siguro no, dera sa atong daghang tag mga night market, ats'yan siya Kagawad, and nahi mo naginis siyang tourist as a attraction, because there are a lot of, ah, my friends no, personal na ako mga kailang, many good rays just witness kung saang Kogan market kay... Right now, kuwan kay siya plastado kay siya Kagawad no, as in yong hangi paningkatan usap sa 20th City Council, and of course, at gendry bukan nga, ah, local government unit na sectioning na siya. And then, it's like more of, ah, the vibe, it's more of like sa Thailand vibe na like market.
Thailand, Taiwan, actually, it is actually prevalent in Southeast Asian countries, like the markets. Then if you think about it, yeah, mostly, especially Kagayanans, we have to admit that we are small-scale businesses. So we have to actually promote that. And that being the case, if we can attract people from other cities, then actually, it would pile up, it will add up. And eventually, strong na atong community, not just the enterprise, but the community itself. The, ang people na dayon, magtinabanga, ang mga tao na dayon will not be engaged in drugs or other mga misdemeanor that is detrimental to the society. Gwapo kayo na siyang enterprise. It is an unconventional way actually to promote peace and order, to keep us busy in a very productive way. So muna siyang atong gwapo kayong approach. And one of the things that we have done is kanalagay ang atong night marketing Kogan. But how about we actually proliferate, proliferate that idea? Para maging cornerstone naging siya sa atong business establishment. When you think about, when you talk about businessman, gud, mostly ang mga tao, magigun, investors, even ako, di ko kasabot. Kung sana ni siya ng investors, by the millions, by the hundreds of million? Pwede ba tao mo invest lang? Kung 10 million lang ang poonan? That is why na, here comes the night market, here comes the Kogan night market, here comes the kanan mga sidewalk, gaston park, et cetera, et cetera. That is why gwapo na for me to really focus on that thing, kay para ang mga gagmay na atong efficiency, atong ma-attend. And kung ma-attend na to na sila, mga nak, mga nak, and muna din na siya. Ang atong vision is hopefully, in the near future, even in the far future, wala na pobre dali sa Kagayan. In a sense, na kita makakaunta katulad ang takaataw, makapalit pa tao pangisnap, kung may estrangas anina. I think that is just my vision. And in order to attain that vision, we have to have good policies. And at the same time, good and easy, simple strategies to promote business in our...
Yeah, that's right. And of course, with that no, ikaingon pa ni Kagawad, now we're helping our local businessmen to try and to... Alang usap sa kayuhan sa atong mga Kagayanon. And another pressing issue sa Kagawad, you're very vocal about supporting, maka-operate ang ato ang mga bao-bao dinhe sa Kagayan di Oro.
Of course, not just bao-bao, I mean, tricabs, yeah. Tricabs tanan. Ato ay is, kanin manggurong mga issues with regards to bao-bao and transportation system. This is a product of need. There is actually a need, and that is why na is supplying mga bao-bao, nagitawag na to ka ng mga illegal transportation system, may ka ng mga habal-habal. Dili man is siya, it's not a product of just a desire for them to operate, but it is a product of need. It is actually a need that during these odd hours, we need transportation system. Actually, I wrote a letter to incorporate the bao-baos or tricabs to have a route plan in Kagayan di Oro. I actually wrote a letter to the executive department. But unfortunately, I hadn't received the reply. But at the end of the day, I'm just saying that we can. I think the LGU has the autonomy and the power to actually accommodate. Just accommodate and look for creative ideas to actually put them in our transportation circulation. So aquaga support yu kuwan yong mga ginagmay langganing ang mga transportation system. Again, para mahatagan na to sila of source of living. It's a source of living issue, also a need for transportation. So we hit multiple birds with once too. First is ma-improve na to on tong transportation system, ikadwa, we give them a source of living. And number three, it's also a protection for our constituents that during odd hours, during the wee hours of the morning, they can have a bao-bao, they can, instead of just having, just walking back home. Dangerous kayo na siya. So my support is basically for, actually, the protection of our constituents, most likely diya get.
Yeah, and we can see that these jobs are a decent job no, and sayang manggud no?
Ang atwa lang na na is basically the management of these multiple na dayon na, for example, nairela, naicika, naibao-bao. It's just a matter of management. We just have to manage, and it is very doable. What I mean by doable, it is within the powers of the LGU. I think, I believe so, I believe so.
Yeah, and I'll say reaction with the strong implementation with, with regards to the ILG memorandum, bao-bao.
Yes, the ILG memorandum, to make it clear. They prohibit the bao-baos, international highways. But what we are trying to promote is outside of the national highways, we can. And I think actually, that is the current topic we are discussing in the Committee of Public Utilities right now. And I just so happen to skip it for this. But ang point na ko is, we have the autonomy and the power, the city government has the power to actually include them in the route plans. So maybe we can, for example, aside from the national highways, we can accommodate the bao-baos, so just use the right mostly. So I think there are certain strategies, that is, one of my mentors taught me to think creatively and think laterally. So let's just think about new ways to actually accommodate. And once we accommodate, daku kayo ni siya utabang sa transportation sector, and also daku po ni siya't tabang sa mga pobre nang tao nagaiengage siya ng...
Yes, oh, eh, because kini siya ilabinang katong kasamtangan na adunay babaon, ako kailang problema, ilabinang katong pagbago sa... Ah, pagbawal sa national highway. And muna yong tunggi pasabot permitin dinhe sa tuang mga programang, ang ginabawal is katulang sa national highway. We can still like operate no, sa kining mga barangay roads and city roads.
Kayo mulagin na siya kung gingen nga, kanamang gong pagpagwas, aning dagan kayang babawal. It is a product of need, it is a need for the city. And it actually is a manifestation that we actually need more transportation vehicles that is safe, that is safe, and that is secure. And these are the only things na ginapangita yun sa atong mga katauhan.
Yes, and of course, dugang sa ato ang pressing issue usap sa transportation. Ansay monte, Kagawad, when it comes to sa pagface out sa atong all the jeepneys, ah, usasangginhosgan usap sa atong national campaign?
Ah, yes, um, as time goes by, no, we have to adapt to changing technologies. Dili man pwedeng, for example, at the time of the stone age, na lugar digital age, stone age na diapunta. It is very, oh, it's very obvious that we have to adapt to the times. And maybe in the future, it will come to fruition, the phasing out of the jeepneys. But as of now, since it is basically the bread and butter of most of our constituents in Kagayan di Oro City, and if ever in the long run, we are going to phase it out, we have to have what we call a, tawag ng pampuli, na atin dud tatai system in place to replace these current jeepneys. For example, we cannot just phase it out automatically, that is very detrimental to the livelihood of these people. So we have to have some sort of replacement effect, and we can do it gradually. Dili na to na siya pwede buhaton kalit-kalit, although initially, ako nanggiunahuna no, para walay samok. We can do it abruptly, walaon na to na sila. But at the end of the day, kung imupunang walaon, you're basically killing the sources of living of these people na for the longest of time. Panghatagong pagkauno, pampaiskila sila mga anak. Now, we have to also be compassionate with regards to their issues. So I would suggest that we do it gradually, and we have a replacement system that is secure and that is also satisfying for these people. Kedy man pwedeng, alis danda na to na sila, muran na nagambine mo sinina, pero gwapo kay hihatag siya. So that is just my principle, na before we remove, you have to first give. So once we give, then we remove the old, we give them new forms of transportation, like kana atong muradnam, time mga modernize or modernization. But at the end of the day, we cannot do it abruptly, it has to be a step-by-step process. As much as karoon, ya buta sa digital age, 10, 20 years ago, dili pa man kay nanika fast ang atong internet. The technology, dili pa man kay nanakka masterful. But same gapon, same goes to our transportation system. So as long as we have a really good system and replacement effect for these jeepneys, then until then, we have to, at some point, really allow and continue the jeepneys in Kagayan di Oro.
Yes, and of course, this national law that hinay-hinay nga gi-implementin is ato ang Dakbayan, you know, a lot of government agencies that are helping our local operators also no, ato, ah, makapuha sila o grants or loans, alang usap sa pagpalit o mga modernized jeepneys. And we're seeing, kuwan karoon, hinay-hinay nga, aduna na yong nagdagan nga mga modernized jeepneys dinhe sa atong Dakbayan. Imuhang take usap ni ni Kagawad?
Yeah, the majority of our transportation system is really a continuation of the old one. Tavella, motorcycles, tricicat, jeepneys. Although there are modernization buses that we are trying to introduce, actually is introduced, but at the end of the day, the majority is really katong mga karaan na gyapon. And until we have a really good system, a replacement effect, then I, I think that I would... Sa akong tanaw, magcontinue paggyapon yung unsang atong naandang dali. But I am not against modernization. But again, we have really pressing issues, poverty, transportation, infrastructure problems with regards to baha o gupapa, systemic traffic in Kagayan. So really, before we engage into modernization, we have to address the present and pressing issues that we are experiencing in Kagayan.
Yes, and we need to see a long-term projects, no, a long-term effect ng mga projects that would really cater, arong cater na to ang ato ang, ato ang vision no. And with that, Kagawad, mangtanan, podko, ansay muhang take or ansay muhang panglantaw sa naaprobahan ng local transport route plan dinhe sa atong Dakbayan. It has been approved by the Department of Transportation and LTPRB.
Ats'ang specific sa na, na route plan, kanamunang LTPRB? I think we haven't discussed that specifically sa committee, but... Amot, pangtanan na to si Engineer Claritan. Again, my stand is basically before na to na magmodernization type, ever we have route plans. Mogina, I actually wrote a letter, I hope lang ta nga mabutang na to na katong mga tricabs, katong mga bao-bao sa route plans. Yeah, again, it's a product of need. So I think, tanaw na to, we have to first test it before we can evaluate the route plans. Okay, at the end of the day, these are things on paper. What is more important is ang atong application. So it goes hand in hand, theory and practice. Both theory and practice will have to collapse into one, dili pwedeng na it is mutually exclusive. Pilita practice without the theory or theory without the practice, dili dapat is sound din na siya. LTPRB nga atong naaprobahan, we have to apply it, and pag-aply ano, we have to test it. And if it is effective, then go. If it is ineffective, we go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, so with that no, atong mga paghinauton, with the coming years, with the application, or kining ato ang pagpatuman sa atong local transport route plan, may mong successful, I don't usab nga, ma-cater na to ang needs usap that with comes to transportation, which is, usasang mga problema usap, not just here, but sa ibang mga LGUs and currently kining LTPRB nga ato ang naaprobahan, it is the answer of some of the...
Ganahan kuwan yong gingen nga, some of the issues, it will not answer the traffic system, traffic to dili yun. But yes, it may address some of the issues, kay atong major problems yun with regards to transportation systems. Basically, the supply and demand, gamay ra yun kayo tag mga dalan, which is dili yun, dili yun siya masigo. We have two, four lanes, and grabe kayong growth sa Kagayan di Oro City. And that is why heavy kayo ang density of traffic. Dagan yun kayo, and wala, I think the kasamtangan, ang mga kasamtangan nga administration, wala lang kayo ni nakita ang sudden growth kung Kagayan di Oro City. And that is why what we are experiencing now is basically the product of the decision-making of the previous administrations. But not to knock them off, no. Ang point na na ko is, it is what it is, muna siyang reality. And now, we have to address the issues as it comes.
Yes, and atag lang... And taglang, arong sa hinahini with that, Kagawad, no? And of course, uh, alang sab, kay, naapod ang atuang, uh, mga, ang kagamahan ng lokal sa, ay, sa Kagehan Yoro. And for sure, mataganing, maybe diligyon abruptly nga mga kasalbaran. At hinahini, we can, uh, elevate that one, uh, ato ang mga programa. And usasab sa mga ilis gutanan na karoon Kagawad, ilabinang pagsaka sa presyo sa gasolina. Uh, dunay mga gikataho nga, ibalik sa gobyernong, ilabinas sa national government, ato ang few-well subsidy. Kunsay mong paglantaw ni ni Alang sab sa ato ang mga, ilabinas atong mga driver sa mga.
Kanayit lugar, no? Anang nagsugod man lugar na ato war on Ukraine. Maginang nagsugod, and siempre affected, magid, especially among third world country. But my take is, I am not really privy and really, I'm not an expert with regards to the price manipulation of such mga commodities in the Philippines. I just hope that the government can do something to really control the prices. And if we are able to control the prices, it would be a great benefit to the constituents of the people. Wala na ako ang maingon, kedy po ko expertan na, although I am concerned. The more na siyang usaka, usaka pa ang bugas, usaka pa na siya. Sumut na yu kalisod ang atong kahintang dari. So maybe we can do a precautionary measures, maybe the local government can do something about it. But overall, let's wait and see. Tanaw na tuang atong national government, if naabagin sila mga programs, sanang marammas ma-reduce tagi ng prices sa gas.
About this few-well subsidy sa mga drivers, Kagawad?
Lili nga muhatag ta sa ilahang.
Yes, na i, like a discount, uh, mahatag na tuang sa atong mga POJs, alang sa pagkuhan na gasolina.
Example, tagay ko example.
Yes, uh, this has been implemented from the previous years. I think nga maghatag og few-well subsidy alang sa mga, um, jeepney drivers, dinis anasod. And to lower down, at least na i-subsidigi ka sa gobyerno, a certain percentage, I think, sa presyo sa gobyerno.
So pinsan may mukompenseta na ang local government?
No, the national government, Kagawad.
Ah, kumayo, kumuhatag sila na, then that's good. Ako alang is, if ever kitang muhatag na local government, medyo lisod na siya ang number. But if the national government can give subsidies to people nga, mapatuhan Kagehan Yoro City, then we take what it is given. We have to take it. Guapo kayo na siya.
Hmm, so it has been implemented from the previous years. I think during the pandemic or way before pandemic, atong pagtaas yun ugayos sa, uh, gasolina. And siguro, uh, hula tulat lang, kung ugaling, aduna may alakang in national government to re-implement this, uh, program, ilahang.
Let's hope, let's hope.
Yeah, cross finger for that, arong, uh, minus minusan yun, ang gilbog ato na sa pag, uh, gasolina sa tuang mga kaigsunan. And alay na sab ni hilis gutana na Kagawad, no? Uh, isub yut ni Kagawad James, uh, James and Judith, no? Ang kining pagkimo of Adho Committee to oversee and, uh, alang sab sa paglantaw, no? Pagtuki sa COA findings, kini mahitungod sa mga unfinished nga mga proyekto dinis sa kagamahanan. Kunsay mo take, sab ni Kagawad?
I guess, we actually tackled that in the Committee on Public Works. Na naagin mga projects that were unfinished, na'y mga projects nga anomalous in nature lugar. So more questionable pa lugar siya. But during that meeting, what I can remember clearly is, I actually requested the different agencies, the COA, our city engineers' office, and also atong city accountant man siguro to, which were represented during the committee meeting. And ako ato is, katuman gong investigations ako, it happened sometime last year. So now, one year has already passed. So I was actually looking for current data and current progress on these projects. Tanaw na tuang, kahit, maybe nilihuok na pwede sila. Pwede na tuang tanawon, kahit kung nilihuok na sila, and kung na-correct na tuang mga mistakes, na ang data na yun nga na-received, ang na-investigate sa COA was a little bit outdated. Ato sang, first, we have to have the facts straight. We have, tanawon sa kinato. Kahit kung katut silang tulukay agency, atong city engineers, ang atong COA, ay, atong city accountant kung COA, kung magkatugma ang atong mga information, then maybe na atay mabuhat ano, na atong maspeed up ang process, atong mapahuman ginin ang mga specific projects. Keh, muklin magun sila nga during COVID time pa daw to. Dagan pakayog mga claims, and since ang investigation was like one year ago, na, tanawon sa na to first. But most importantly, ang pinaka-importante yya is, we make sure na kunati projects, we finish those projects. Niya, dili man po ko the type manggud po na, for example, nakakita ng tao, anomali, diretsyo rin ato, hatagan ng punishment. Ang ako is, tanawon sa na to. Ato sa, aside sa due process, dili, the best decision na mabuhat na to is basically, tanawon sa na to. Keh, kung naipuruhan, gidey nga mahuman na nila, then ipahuman na to. Keh, kung dili na siya mahuman, it will be a very disadvantageous, well, it will put us in a very disadvantageous position. So tanaw na tuang, kung kaya ba nila mahuman? Tanaw na tuang, obserbahan na tuang, not immediately punish katong mga tawa na, unless nakalabang na yun sila sa balak. But if ever muhang yun silang, because of setbacks such as COVID, pwede na munis siya mahuman, can you give us a little bit of time? Siguro maybe a few penalties here and there, and after that, ang importante, kahit kung mahuman ang project. So you have to look at it on the perspective na pumanon nila ang project. Dili kay pasagda na lang because we punished them. Although, guapo magina siya. Ako mostly manggud, I follow the psychological rule of positive reinforcement. Meaning, instead of punitive, na sige ni mo siya di punish, tagaan ni mo siya og reward, para mahuman niyang isa niyang katrabaho. So that is my approach, no? Dili man ako ang chairman ana, and ako counselor, mapuko, I can only say what I can. But mula na siya ang atong thought, na dili po pwedeng, just because naani ang mga reports, we arrive to a hasty conclusion, dautan, kawatan, way claro, ayos sa. Atong obserbahan, atong tanawon, and maybe kung mahuman nila ang mga projects, then good for us. Kung dili, then we find a way. We have to be objective in terms of projects, kahit kana manggong mga infrastructures, crucial manggong Kagehan siya, para development to the city. So we cannot just hastily say, inani, inana. First, we straighten out the facts, kaduha, we provide solutions. Ay, na nadayanta mo punish, kung dili sila, mukonform with the solutions that we provide. So positive reinforcement, yun na, sige, tagaantam og additional time to finish. Keh, wala ang iperfect nga mga tao, gamayram yukayo na, that's the reason why in a third world country, tabi, because we are not really high on performances. So ang point na ku is, give them a chance, ato silang hatagan ng panahon, nga ilan ang humanon, and kung dili gina nila mahuman, then we punish them. But dili nga punishment would be our top priority. Wala na akong take, many would disagree, mostly would disagree na ng tao sa akin. But that is my approach, and or d'ke, ako manggud, results oriented, manggud George. It's either you give me the results or not. No, kung maglu, kung madelay maganikal sa results, then dapat napon na siya gamay ng consequence, but not to kill the project. So my point is, ato ng tanawon, wala yun sila nakalabag sa lo, if we can extend our patience, then ato ng buhaton, para mahuman din na siyang ang project. It is just an issue about, malagin na yun lang ginaingon, process versus destination. Ako, destination yuko. Our destination, kung gusto ka maabot sa Manila, then kinanglan ka maabot ito. So ako ay is, gusto ko mahuman ang projects, ipahuman atong project. We give them time, we give them a chance, para mahuman at nila. Dili kay we punish them, sumut na non dili mahuman.
Sayang na.
Exactly, muna siyang ginatawag po sa, na kabasa ko, article lagi about gain theory, ba dili, you minimize your maximum loss. That is a maximum loss. If we immediately go to a hasty generalization, na dautan, kawatan, corrupt, no. Before we engage with that discussion, we have to let them finish the project first. Una ang ako at take.
And how about, uh, ang kining kayuhan, or may mong paglantaw sa pagkimo sa Adho Committee, Kagawad?
Ako, I'm not really, although legislator ko, but I'm not really full on policies, ganun man. Keh, kung magsikita, buhat ang Adho Committee, and if ever ang Adho Committee, dili na po siya mo work, magbuhat na po ta. After, kundi na po ng mapal, buhat na po tag management board to manage the Adho Committee, para matanaw ang project. So again, ako, I came from the private sector. Although, guapo man na siya, maybe the correct process, but again, akong ginaingon lagi lai, akong brain lang, di dili na yun kainan. Mostly, ako manggud is, solution manggud akong kapangitawang diretsyo. So an Adho Committee or not, just a regular meeting, just a committee meeting, please, enough. So it is just enough nga, mabutang ta sa committee meeting, ato silang ipahistoria dito, enough na na siya. The Adho Committee is within the committee na mismo Public Works. Now, that is how I see it. Correct na si James, so correct na uban mga personalities, but mumpuni ako. I'm not saying a different, I'm just saying I'm offering a different solution. My solution is, there is no need, i-discussan na tuang na dito, iappear na tuang na dito. Because, George, I believe that everything rises and falls on leadership. So naragin na sa leadership and how you manage that committee, kahit para makaproduce sila sa results that we desire, anaragin na siya.
Yes, and with that, no, ato mayat, paghinautan nga, dunay mga positibong mga butang ang mukimap with the, uh, kining issue sa kasamtangan. And siguro, uh, Kagawad, with, uh, sa umaabot ng kapiestahan sa atong Dakbayan, siguro imuhang, punimbitar sab, umuhang, pag-anghat sa atong mga kaigsunan to celebrate with that.
Somsan, isa na niya kumessaged, muna niya kumessaged katong sa, ano na ba niya siya? Dili, dili, dili. So anyway, ako alang is, ako radya ko, may activity. Message, invite na ko tanan mga bisita po na tuang na just Kagehan. So also, from the different parts of the Philippines, so come visit Kagehan Yoro. Kagehan is really friendly, we are very hospitable. Guapo kayo niya nga mo ang attitude, ni ganahan kayo ming, and I visited dari. We love to take care of other people. Come, experience Kagehan Yoro, and I'm sure na dili mo ma, be satisfied, I'm sure na ma-enjoy mo dari. So guys, katong mga tagagawas, come and visit Kagehan Yoro.
Yes, and with that, no, um, sanglit, uh, kining programa ang inyong konseho, mabalik-balikrama ng atuang, uh, mga guest ni Ili, no? And of course, uh, siguro mga yun na po big update sa sunod ng edisyon, mabisita na po, mubisita na po si Kagawad dinis atong programa ang inyong konseho. Siguro sa atong hinapos nga oras, Kagawad, imuhang party statement, ilabinas atong mga kaigsunan dinis sa Kagehan Yoro.
Ang lagi katu, yuko nga, the success, the success of the city depends on the wisdom of the people. So ang ako alang is, I hope kitatanan, we focus on improving ourselves. Keh, once we improve ourselves, we improve the city as well. So ang ako ay is, stay humble, work hard, then success will eventually fall.
Yes, that's right. And again, thank you, salamat, Kagawad, sa inyong panahon kay.
Thank you, George, salamat.
Busy kayang schedule, no, magpapagali sa public hearing. And with that, thank you, Kay, Kagawad, sa paghatawid time. So mga katawan, naglangkoba sa ato ang inyong konseho, Karona, nito na kaubal ato ang chairman, sa Committee on, uh, Energy, si City Councilor, Alga Suwan. So, uh, sangalan lamang sa kinatibok ang puwesas, sa City Information Office in Dakbayan, sa Kagehan Yoro, Ubo sa Administrasyon, ni Mayor Rolando Clarix Uy. Ngayon man sa pagpangulo, sab, sa atong City Information Officer, Miss Ibis Gontero. Kinilawan si George Bagot, ang salama, sa isang iyong pagtanaw, antos sa sunod di gayon, og mayang adlaw sa tanan.